Welcome everyone to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have each and every one of you this evening, and it's nice to have a packed house. There will be two opportunities this evening, well, let me start at the beginning, sorry. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. There will be two opportunities this evening to address the board, first being Agenda Item 6.0. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Item 7.1 through 11.3. Please state the agenda items you're referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up first on the agenda are district highlights and recognitions, and I'd like to pass it over to Reverend Bell. Okay, real quick, Von, before we, before you start, can I have a motion for the resolution of commendation for state swimming 200-yard individual medalie winner Chase Swerengen? Did I say it right? Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you, Von.
Thank you. President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Ms. Marshall. This evening is one of those great occasions where we get to celebrate a lot of great people for doing great things in our district. And to get us started off this, this evening with a commendation, I want to introduce Ms. Dawn Sayer, principal of Westerville Central High School, who will come at this time.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to honor one of our great athletes, but also an even better person, Chase Swerengen. I've got a, a long list of accomplishments that Chase has accomplished, and only, he's only a junior, so we still have another year with Chase, thank goodness. But we are here because he did win a state championship this year. But he has also, in his career so far, been club swimming. He's been a national champion several times in club swimming. He's had, held several school records, and still holds several school records, and also at one time held a national record. I've gotten a chance to talk to Chase a few times, and as you can see by his family sitting here with him, obviously, he's a tremendous athlete, but he's an even better person. So I am grateful that he's a part of our Warhawk family. And I've also invited Matt Long, who has been his swim coach, so I'm going to ask him to say a few words.
Thanks. So I think, excuse me. So I think Chase's results really speak for themselves. He's a tremendous athlete. But having been a coach for more than a decade now, I think what really sets Chase apart from a lot of the athletes I've worked with is his resilience. Chase's ability to work through hardship is truly remarkable. And every time he overcomes a mental block that would cripple a normal high school athlete, it just, it really stuns me. And I just, I've really enjoyed working with you this past season, and I really look forward to working with him again next season. Thanks.
All right, so at this time, we'd like to recognize Chase Swerengen for state championship.
Congratulations, Chase. Also this evening, we have the awesome joy and privilege now of celebrating our Spring 2023 A-plus Award winners. The A-plus Awards are presented twice during each school year, once in the fall and once in the spring, to employees who distinguish themselves through a single or ongoing demonstration of exemplary service and performance. The selection committee's decision is guided by evaluating each nominee's actions and how they are demonstrated in three different regards. First, in their support of the district's mission statement, which is to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live. Secondly, their willingness to go above and beyond normal expectations in support of students. And then thirdly, their behavior being consistent with one or more of the district's values, including respect, inclusiveness, community, communication, collaboration, innovation, nurturing, trust, and accountability. And so with that criteria in mind, I would like to introduce our 2023 Spring A-plus Award winners. And we'll begin this evening at the Early Learning Center. And our first award recipient is the Director of Facilities, Mr. Jeff LaRose. Jeff was nominated. Jeff was nominated by Dr. John Kellogg, who is our superintendent. A little bit about Jeff. Jeff has been instrumental in developing and implementing our facilities management program for slightly more than two decades. Most recently, he supported the creation of our current Long Range Facilities Master Plan that was finalized in 2018, which led to the 2019 bond package approved by voters. As a result, he has spearheaded the multiple, he has spearheaded multiple construction projects that were included in that bond package, as well as the multi-phase renovation of Westerville High School. Perhaps the hallmark of Jeff's recent work are the two new schools added to our fleet of facilities, Minerva France Elementary and Minerva Park Middle School. As if those projects weren't enough to keep him busy, he also has been overseeing significant renovations at Annhurst, Whittier, and Hawthorne Elementary Schools. Jeff's vision and design for many of our schools and program sites, such as the Academic Enrichment Center, are driven by inspiration and innovation. The magnitude of the work also requires strong process management skills and adherence to available financial resources. Jeff has consistently delivered projects on time and within budget. Jeff has left a significant mark on our district since joining us in 2002. His standard for facilities design and management has set a high bar. Many of our new and renovated facilities have been recognized by national trade publications as exemplary projects. He has been instrumental in ensuring our students have warm, safe, dry, and modern facilities in which to learn. Without question, his work truly aligns with our vision to be the benchmark of educational excellence. Please join me in congratulating Jeff LaRose. Jeff LaRose, congratulations. Our next award recipient is also from the Early Learning Center, and it is our Community Engagement Coordinator, Charlie Boss. Charlie was nominated by Dennis Blair, a member of Westerville City Council, Gem Award recipient, and WEC and Big Bus Board member. Since joining our district in 2020, Charlie has made an immediate impact on sharing our school district successes with the community and supporting those organizations that in turn support our schools, staff, and students. In particular, Charlie's work with the nonprofit Westerville Education Challenge has been very appreciated by the organization, which supports multiple programs, including Westerville Hope Squads, Parent Prep, and Twinkle, a social-emotional support dog. You gotta love Twinkle. Charlie brings stories to life and captures moments and programs with a skill level that is unmatched. How many other school districts can boast that they have a dog, Twinkle, with nearly a thousand followers on Instagram? Her work provides ongoing support that ultimately benefits Westerville City School students by coaching others and helping to grow programs. One of Charlie's greatest superpowers is listening to all the pieces, goals, and hopes, and then making it all come together brilliantly through her writing, social media posts, and videos. Her ongoing support makes us all better. Please join me in congratulating Charlie Boss. Congratulations. Congratulations, Charlie. Our next A-plus Award winner comes from Heritage Middle School, and it's the kitchen manager Lori Jones. Lori was nominated by coworker Chelsea Darty. Lori has gone above and beyond for the students at Heritage since she joined our district. She listens to her students and has taken time to learn their likes and dislikes, then works hard to keep their favorite items available for them, despite the constant supply chain issues that our vendors have. Lori recently worked with the special education teachers to become involved with their money unit. Lori and her staff set up the Husky Store to allow their students to exchange coupons they earned in class for play money that they could spend on treats such as ice cream, chips, and pizza, while at the same time learning to recognize different coins. It was clear that the students loved getting to participate in the Husky Store, just as it's clear that Lori truly loves the students in her building and will always go above and beyond just for them. Please join me in congratulating Lori Jones. Congratulations. Our next A-plus Award winner comes from Mark Twain Elementary, and it's the K-5 ELL teacher Chelsea Lakeman. And Chelsea was nominated by one of our parents, Russ, Russ Kitzlinger. Chelsea has absolutely gone above and beyond in supporting the community's effort to launch the Big Bus Initiative in Westerville, which in turn positively impacts the English learners that she works with. She's been present at all of the onsite programming meetings held in the Abbey Lane community. She has offered to help guide the nonprofits volunteer orientation process and has been truly helpful in building trusting relationships with the students and the parents that the Big Bus serves. The Big Bus is building momentum and could soon have an even greater impact throughout the Westerville School District. And Chelsea has been a huge reason for this initiative and it being able to have gained traction so quickly. So congratulations, and please join me in congratulating Chelsea for her accomplishments. Congratulations, Chelsea. Our next A-plus Award winner also comes from Mark Twain Elementary, and it is teacher Natalie Martin. Natalie was nominated by a bunch of people. She was nominated by a parent and coworker Heather Ivory, and parent Erin Fensel, Vince Massey, Sarah Reek, Jenny Goddard, Ben Pact, Sophia Ahmed, Brooke Boldnik, and Blake Woodruff. Please forgive me if I messed up your name. So many people nominated Natalie for this honor. It seems best that we would just share some of what she means to this learning community by reading some of the sentiments shared in their nominations. First, one nominator wrote, "My daughter is in Mrs. Martin's second grade class, and she has received some of the best instruction I have witnessed from one of the most caring people. Our daughter loves school and is finally showing growth because of Natalie and her willingness to not only go above and beyond, but to take the time to get to know our girl." Another writes, "Mrs. Martin challenges her students. She loves her students, and she meets all of their individual and very specific needs. She is a true A-plus teacher. Mrs. Martin has gone above and beyond with educating my daughter with her reading." Another says, "Mrs. Martin has done amazing work with my son. We've seen so much growth, and he has skyrocketed in his math skills all the way to the gifted percentile." Another says, "Mrs. Martin has taught both of my children at the second grade level, and I have spent much time, as a parent over the years, volunteering in her classroom, and have gotten to see firsthand just how amazing, loving, patient, and caring she is each and every day in her classroom. She faces challenges with the same grace and patience as anything else and makes the children feel safe, seen, and heard." Another writes, "Mrs. Martin is a fantastic teacher who uses creative strategies to help her students learn. She goes the extra mile to make sure everyone feels included and successful." And one more, "Mrs. Martin has created a strong culture in her classroom that emphasizes kindness, respect, and academic diligence. And we have seen incredible growth in our daughter this year as a result. Mrs. Martin works hard to push every child to do his or her best, and we appreciate her efforts." Would you join me in congratulating Natalie Martin? Congratulations, Mrs. Martin. Our next A-plus Award winner comes from McVeigh Elementary, and it is music teacher Evan McIntyre. And Evan was nominated by the principal. Mr. McIntyre went from being part of a split specials team serving McVeigh Elementary to the school's first time, first full-time music teacher. This gave him the chance to fully integrate music into the school community by creating learning and performance opportunities for students, while also developing them as learners and performers. Mr. McIntyre has been able to fully revitalize McVeigh's music program in several ways. He started an extracurricular choir opportunity for students that spans multiple grade levels and represents McVeigh to the greater community. Last fall, he also embarked on creating a fifth-grade musical performance opportunity in which students selected a musical, developed choreography and staging, rehearsed a production, and successfully performed the musicals for the school and Westerville communities. He decided to cast and produce not one, but two different fifth-grade musicals with unique sets, scripts, and costumes. This allowed so many more students to be engaged and involved in the performance opportunity. Mr. McIntyre has explicitly displayed the tenets of inclusivity, community, and collaboration throughout his work, and devoted countless hours of his personal time to students' success. He has additional, he has additional performance opportunities planned for other grade levels, as well as an inaugural arts night at McVeigh. There's no question that Evan McIntyre has exemplified the type of music teacher and, and created an arts program that every student in Westerville should be able to experience. Please join me in congratulating Evan McIntyre. Congratulations, Mr. McIntyre. Our next A-plus Award winner comes to us from Minerva France Elementary, and it is the head custodian, Mr. David Payne. Mr. Payne was nominated by the principal, Tyson Hillkirk. And he writes in his nomination, "David has worked as hard as anyone in the last 10 months to support the students and learning community at Minerva France. He was actually the first district employee to work at Minerva France, spending time with contractors and skilled trades professionals to learn the ins and outs of the new facility, while ensuring the building was neat and tidy on a daily basis for the many tours that was provided, that was provided for community members and new families. Last summer, he made sure each teacher's moving in that they had what they needed to become acclimated to their new spaces. When issues arose, David came to the rescue to take care of them quickly, so staff could focus on being ready to receive students. As the year progressed, David put in extra work to ensure the new school remains in top-notch shape for years to come. He has spent extra time developing a team of second-shift custodians by passing on his knowledge and providing feedback to ensure each area is clean and ready for students. He is always in communication with administrators and office staff to address building needs. Perhaps David's greatest contribution to Minerva France is being Mr. Payne and serving as a great role model for students. He is kind and compassionate when a student is in need of support. He is gentle in his approach, but also encourages students to maintain high expectation for themselves and also for their school. Mr. Payne is truly an A-plus employee at Minerva France Elementary. Join me in celebrating Mr. David Payne. Congratulations, Mr. Payne. Our next award recipient is from North High School, and it is English teacher Jennifer Kirk. And Jennifer was nominated by a coworker Jenny Freshley. She writes, "Jen Kirk is tireless in her pursuit of excellence in her own teaching. This is evident in a number of ways. First, she eagerly seeks out ways to improve her craft. She wholeheartedly attends compulsory professional development opportunities, and she looks for optional outlets for growth year after year. Jen has devoted many hours and days in recent years to forge a path towards standards-based learning by serving on committees, participating in book studies, and presenting at professional development days. She is so generous in her wisdom and expertise in teaching that her collaboration in meetings and professional development sessions always benefits those working with her. As a result, she ends up lifting up the quality of her colleagues' teaching and consequently improving learning outcomes for all students, not just her own. Jen is without question an A-plus educator as she inspires others through her thoughtful, creative, and compassionate approach to our great calling of teaching. Would you join me in congratulating Jennifer Kirk?" Congratulations, Jennifer. Our next A-plus Award winner is from South High School, and is an English teacher, Jenny Freshley. And Jenny was nominated by one of her students, Jaquan Gore, coworkers Megan Messner and Catherine?
Foit.
Foit? Thank you very much. And Sarah Dietrich. They write, "Jen, Jenny Freshley is described as a thoughtful and caring educator who takes time out..." who takes time out of her day to make sure students receive extra help outside of the classroom. She pushes students to do their best, but also meets them where they need support. She encourages students to not give up. Her student nominator wrote, 'There were so many times I was ready to get out of her class, but she never let me quit and never gave up on me. She treats all of us like we are her kids. She cares so much about us and knows about our lives outside of school.' Mrs. Freshley makes sure her students get all of the help that they need. Coworkers share that Jenny works harder than just about anyone in their building, often well past the required hours, to make sure that her students are not only successful, but that they know how much she cares about them, often by greeting every student at the door by name and asking about what's going on in their lives. She remembers things about their families and siblings. She knows them and treats them like her own kids. Jenny goes above and beyond by working tirelessly to give timely corrective feedback to her students so that they have the opportunity to do redo assignments and master the content. She collects the most detailed and specifics data on student progress and constantly adjusts her curriculum and plans to best meet the needs of the students. She collaborates with peers constantly in order to better her instruction, gets resources to support her students, and make herself better. Jenny has given her time and resources to create multiple clubs at Westerville South that help students feel connected to their school and provide a needed outlet for them, such as a recently-formed knitting club. She bakes for them, plays music, and provides a calming environment, all with a hobby that the students can use in their lives after high school. She has also worked to beautify Westerville South by starting an environmental and gardening club and has taken over as the school's in-the-know advisor, giving countless hours to help this trivia team earn victories against other schools. Through all of these various activities, Jenny embraces the diverse group of students who are a part of them and nurtures them with kindness and love. Please join me in congratulating Jenny Freshley. Congratulations, Ms. Freshley. Our next A-plus award winner, also from South High School, is a science teacher, Lauren Sefton. Lauren was nominated by a parent, um, Annette Ramos, and she writes, "Lauren exemplifies the district's ideal A-plus faculty member and brings to life the district's mission statement, which is to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live. She gets to know her students individually along with their personal goals and prepares them to succeed not only in high school, but beyond. One of her nominators has written, and I quote, "'Ms. Sefton learned early on that my daughter had a passion for forensic science and provided guidance as to which courses would be appropriate both in high school and college, and provided a recommendation that allowed her to attend the National Youth Leadership Forum's Medicine Program in Boston. My daughter developed an even deeper passion for chemistry, further guiding her college and career path. Knowing this passion, Ms. Sefton allowed her to work with her as a lab assistant during her senior year, customizing her jobs towards those she would encounter in her chosen field and giving her confidence heading into college,' end quote. Lauren also supports students by keeping an eye on their overall well-being. She provides academic support for her own classes, but makes sure her students can get the support they need to be successful in other classes as well. Lauren nurtures communication, collaboration, innovation, and accountability in her inclusive community classrooms by having the students engage with one another on various scientific projects. Students in her classes work together, building each other up, both academically and personally. She is truly an A-plus teacher and mentor. Join me in congratulating Lauren Sefton." Our final two awards this evening are special A-plus awards that are being presented to two of the most beloved, respected, and adored, uh, people that have come through the Westerville City School District. Um, now, these are, uh, th- these awards are different from the others, uh, because we had to keep these a secret so they would not find out. So the look on their faces alone is gonna be worth the effort. Um, the next award recipient, uh, that I would like to present to this evening is Ms. Rhonda Gilpin. Rhonda, we would like to present you with this special A-plus award and to thank you for your 36 years of outstanding service to the Westerville City School District. Your tireless devotion and dedication, uh, not just to your work, but to the men and women, boys and girls, whose lives have been impacted and greatly blessed and benefited because of your tireless work and dedication. We want to say thank you. This is one of those moments where it really seems like thank you is not really enough, um, but it's all I got. Your, your tremendous, uh, leadership and devotion to the staff, uh, and to the work, and the exemplary way, way in which you have represented the members of the WEA has truly been a blessing to watch. In so many other places, um, as board members, we have the opportunity to know, uh, other board members in other districts, and so we get, uh, to peek into what the relationship is like between district leadership and sometimes the Educational Association leadership, and it's not always the best. One of the things that I have been able, we have been able to brag about is how wonderful the relationship has been between us down through the years. And so we want to say thank you for all that you have done and hope that you will now take some time, relax, enjoy those grandbabies, um, and enjoy the next chapter. But thank you for your 36 years of dedication to Westerville.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rhonda. And our final A-plus award for this evening is presented to Mr. Mark Hersheiser. How are ya? Well, what could I say about Mr. Hersheiser? Uh, well, let, let me begin by just saying thank you for your 33 years of outstanding service and dedication to the Westerville City School District. Started off as a speech pathologist and have worked your way up through the ranks, um, to deputy superintendent that will here in just a little while, trans, uh, transcend into being the interim superintendent. This is another situation where thank you does not seem like, uh, enough. Um, all that you have given and the amount of dedication that you have shown to the staff, to the students, and to the Westerville community, we just wanna say to you from the bottom of our hearts, thank you, thank you, thank you. There aren't many, um, there, there aren't many phone numbers that when I see their names pop up on my phone, my heart rate goes through the roof. We had, uh, we worked together through the pandemic, um, and your, the leadership that you helped to provide during that time was simply priceless. But I gotta say, there's just something about when my phone rings and I look down and it says, "Mark Hersheiser", it feels like I'm being sent to the principal's office all over again. My heart's racing because I'm like, oh my goodness, if Hersheiser's showing, if he's calling me, then it's gotta be bad. And I've had the, the experience of walking with you into buildings and, um, I, I really, I swear, I believe that there's a code that they have on the walkie-talkies to let the building know Hersheiser is in the building, Hersheiser's in the building. Um, we, we, we love you, appreciate you for all that you have done, and so thank you, Mark. Congratulations, Mr. Mark Hersheiser. Yep, that's it. Okay, at this time, we will pause and allow, uh, all of our award recipients to, uh, meet Matt out at the bell for a photo opportunity. The rest of you are welcome to stay and join us for the remainder of the meeting if you'd like, but we'll pause at this time for just a moment.
And the agenda, uh, 4.1 reports, we do not have any reports this meeting, which takes us to board meeting minutes. 5.1 may have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, March 13th, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments here? Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.2 may have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, March 20th, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any public comments this evening, which takes us to financials. 7.1 may have a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 annual appropriations.
So moved.
Second. And Ms. Marshall, you wanna talk to us?
Uh, yes, thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So we have a few adjustments to the current year, um, current fiscal year appropriations. Uh, we have some adjustments for Minerva France and an Adam H. grant. Um, we saw a decreased allocation in a couple of our grants also, and then we have a new grant for, um, title four, five, Title A, yeah, Title 1A. And, um, we are also appropriating for the additional dollars for the premium funds that we had with our COPS issue back, way back when, when we did all that to help, um, fill in for some construction projects that we have. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Sorry. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Does anyone have anything to pull out on the personnel consent agenda besides me? Nope. Um, I'm gonna welcome Carrie Dennis, and then we're gonna do two motions for this. The first one will be 8.1 through 8.11, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It wasn't the first one speaking, but I had to turn it on. Can you guys hear me? Yeah? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure, I had to turn it back on. Um, thank you and good evening, President Davidson and members of the board. I'd like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. Along with regular action items in tonight's agenda, there are a number of items to be noted. Tonight, I want to start with a heartfelt thank you and recognition of our retirements that appear on tonight's personnel consent agenda. Teresa Hill, an intervention specialist at Whittier with 13 years of, of service; Linda Nolan, vocal music at Westerville South with 18 years of service; Denise Stuckey-Zander, school nurse at Westerville Central with 24 years of service; Donna Walker, with food services at Westerville North with 25 years of service; Pamela Charleston, with math, a math teacher at Genoa Middle School with 32 years of service; and Linda Lisa Daypost, a first-grade teacher at McVay Elementary School with 37 years of dedicated service. Many thanks to them for those number of years. The next items to present to the board are a number of items related to the district's reorganization. At the last board meeting, Dr. Kellogg denounced his resignation to pursue a wonderful career opportunity with the ESCCO in Columbus State Community College. This was on the heels of the previously-accepted retirement of Deputy Superintendent Mark Hersheiser. Effective May 1st, Mark Hersheiser will begin the transition to serve as the interim superintendent effective July 1st. Um, this will be until the board selects the next superintendent. Assistant Superintendent of Operations Scott Dorn will become Deputy Superintendent, replacing Mark Hersheiser. I will transition to become the district's business manager, assuming the operational responsibilities previously held by Scott Dorn. Mark Cooper will become the Executive Director of Human Resources. Um, we will welcome back to our district Carly Collins, who is here tonight, um, as the next Director of Human Resources. Carly formerly served in our Human Resources- Carly formerly served in our Human Resources Department before she took an administrative position with Dublin City Schools as our Coordinator of Human Resources. We are excited that Carly will rejoin our team and keep up the great work that we've been doing moving forward. Jody Brown will transition from interim coordinator of the Office of English Learners to coordinator. Tammy Cole-Santa will become an Executive Director of Student Services. And Jessie Martin, who is also here this evening, who has served as our mental health facilitator, will become the Director of Student Wellbeing. Gertie Glass will become Executive Director of Specialized Learning Programs, and the resulting Director of Special Education will be filled by Adam Flugie, who has served as the Coordinator of Special Education in our district since 2017. Effectively, I'm sorry, effective July 1, Sarah Burka will become the district's Enrollment Center Coordinator. And Angela Hayes, who has been serving as Robert Frost interim principal, will drop her interim title and become the principal of Robert Frost Elementary School. Becky Yanni has accepted the opportunity to fill the role of Coordinator of Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities position at the district level. In November, the board accepted the retirement of Vicki Moss. On the consent agenda this evening is a recommendation to hire Tracy White, who is also here this evening, as the next principal of Mark Twain Elementary School. Tracy currently works for Stone Monroe Falls City Schools. She has extensive elementary teaching experience and is presently the principal of Indian Trail Elementary. Tracy has her Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education from the Ohio State University and her Master's of Science in Education Administration from Kent State University. Please join me in welcoming both Tracy and Carly to our district. I recognize this to be a great deal of change, but want to say thank you to the board for the support to start many of these transitions in May, to ensure that the great deal of knowledge and information that each of these individuals holds is not lost in the transition as we set the district on pace for the start of the 2324 school year. As always, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Hearing none.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay. 8.12, I am going to pull this out separately and not vote on it because my daughter works athletic events and is a ticket taker, so I'm going to recuse myself. So may I have a motion for 8.12?
So moved.
Second.
This is the employment of supplemental and licensed people activity permits for our district. It's a number of spring supplementals, including our ticket takers, which do play an important part, so we thank you for that. Fairly simple.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Epstein. Okay, moving on to old business, would it be okay if we took this as one? Okay. 9.1 through 9.9, may I have a motion for old business?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments, suggestions here? Okay, hearing none.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, new business this evening, 10.1, First Reading Policy 2412 Homebound Instruction Program. And Elizabeth Jokan, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to recommend that the board approve an update to Board Policy 2412 Homebound Instruction Program. The update's being recommended to reflect that the district will provide one hour of instruction for each school day that a student is participating in a homebound instruction program unless a superintendent approves additional instructional time when circumstances warrant it, and that five hours of home instruction shall be equivalent to attendance for five school days in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 3323.12. The update's also being recommended to indicate that homebound instruction will not be provided when the location for the instruction presents a hazard to the instructor's health, when an adult is not present during instruction, or the condition of the student is such as to preclude their benefit from the instruction. Based on the above, I'm recommending that the board approve the updated version of Board Policy 2412 as proposed. Are there any questions?
Hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, 10.2, First Reading Policy 5512 Tobacco Use and Prevention. And we'll welcome Tammy Santa. Tammy, do you want to do 10.2 and 10.3?
I'd love to.
Great.
All right, good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall. You have two policies in front of you, both related to tobacco use. We can start with the first one. For your review, they're both up for revision and your consideration. There's not a ton of changes on either, but for 5512, you'll see some definitions that got updated, as well as a little bit of programming suggestions. Any questions on that one first? The second one, Policy 7434, again, on this one, you're just going to see mostly updates on the definitions becoming more relative. Thank you.
Thanks. Up next, 10.4, Policy 8330 Student Records. And Mr. Reeves is with us, welcome.
Thank you, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall, members of the board. Before moving on with the recommended approval of 8330, and in light of the approval of tonight's consent agenda, I'd like to amend a statement from a previous board meeting. And Mr. Hersheiser's retirement approval, it's fuzzy now, but I said something like, Mark would limp out of here with no power. Well, I'd like the record to reflect that I didn't mean a single word of that.
Hey, it still could be true.
You have before you my recommendation to, First Reading to approve Policy 8330 Student Records. The first, most of the policy changes are just grammatical, changing pronouns to specific positions and/or making sentences read just a little bit better. There are two clauses that are additions that I would like to review. There are words included in one of the clauses that note that copyrighted or restricted material that is contained in the record may be excluded from the request of a student record. An example of that would be something included in a student's record that may contain proprietary information that, from a third-party entity that contractually we just may not be able to share. And then in the area talking about our legal obligation to share student records with armed service recruiting, we are requiring that our Armed Forces Recruiting Officer sign a form asserting that the information is for sole use of military recruiting service and the student information will not be shared outside of the recruiting services. And that's pretty standard across the board. I'm not suggesting that we've had an issue with that in any way. We are a very willing partner with our armed services. And something that's not being changed in our policy at the beginning that I do want to state and to read, and that is that student records shall be available only to students and their parents, eligible students, designated school officials who have a legitimate educational interest in the information, or to other individuals or organizations as permitted by law. So I do not want to give the sense to our families and our communities that it's just a free-for-all requesting student records.
Any questions?
Just one, Scott, if you could, and you pretty much just did it, but I'm going to ask you to even state it in another way, perhaps. There was a lot of angst in school district just north of us with Big Walnut around the release of records and who could have them and what that particular district believed it needed to do. And I am wondering if you can reassure all involved in this school district as regards what our approach is.
Yes. The acquisition of our student records is very sacred and is private, but there are legal obligations and very specific, as I read, organizations that we are legally obligated to share that with. We protect our families and we protect our students' information, and we want to make sure that in only cases where we are permitted and required by law that we will share our family's personal information.
Yeah, I think that is really important. There's been a lot of misunderstanding about what we will and won't release, to whom. So thank you for stating that twice in two different ways.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. McElroy to join us for 10.5 and 10.6, two new policies, Policy 8400 School Safety and Policy 8420 Emergency Situations in School. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall. Tonight, you have revisions to Policy 8400 School Safety and Policy 8420 Emergency Situations in Schools in front of you. Policy 8400 has been revised to reflect the recent verbiage and procedures under state law for the district's emergency management plan, threat assessments, and persistently dangerous schools. Thus, it is recommended that the board adopt the changes in Policy 8400. Also, on Policy 8420, Emergency Situations at Schools has been revised to include an accurate reflection of state law 37, 37.73. This revision to policy reflects new verbiage for fire, tornado, and safety drills that are to conduct it in each of our schools. Thus, it is also recommended that the board adopt the changes in Policy 8400 as written. Any questions?
Just a comment, if I... I was really pleased to see these revisions. I usually grumble when there's too much procedure in a policy, but in the case of the revised school safety policy, I think that what is in that policy is appropriate and should be publicized fairly widely, just as there were concerns about the release of private information and directory information and all other student information. There are also concerns based on what has happened in this country around what we do with threat assessments, how we approach those, and people want to know that we do have good plans in place. And this policy goes a long way toward describing some of the approaches that we take, and I thank you for that language.
You're welcome. I appreciate that because you're right. We're receiving, I've received a number of calls from people asking those questions, and I'm always willing to have those discussions, but it's great to point to policy that supports that approach as well. Thank you.
I do have just one quick question. Thank you also for this. So on the, for the EMPs, just for folks who haven't heard of them, it's sort of spelled out here, but if you could just do like the 10-second, you know, that each building has an EMP and what's in that. And I just wanted to clarify, when we say building here, the district has academic buildings, but we have lots of other buildings. So does that apply to all buildings or academic buildings, just to be clear?
So thank you for that. The state law really focuses on buildings with students, but this district also widens that approach, so our emergency management plans also affect buildings like this building particularly. The emergency management plan is basically an article that helps describe the responsibilities that each school district and each school building has in reference to its drills. So we have to have X amount of fire drills, X amount of tornado drills, X amount of safety drills, so it speaks to that. It also speaks to the reporting of our site plans, emergency plans, other plans that we have in place to protect our students. Some of this information is only shared with our first responders, and other information is shared directly with the state. And it also covers our threat assessment teams. And the new law states that schools from grades six, that have grades six through 12, have to have threat assessment teams in them that are trained, and that information is also included in our emergency operations plan. Have to say that Westerville has gone above and beyond the state law of six through 12 that we have emergency, I'm sorry, we have threat assessment teams in all of our schools. So therefore, all those involved in the threat assessment process are trained, and we track that and report that to the state each year. Also, the emergency management plan also discusses the training of drills and the practicing of our drills, our full-scope exercises, our tabletop exercises, and our functional exercises that have to take place in a three-year cycle. Last year, we conducted our full-scope exercise, and now we'll rotate to our emergency plan, which points towards either a full-scope exercise, I'm sorry, a functional exercise or a tabletop exercise. And most likely, we'll point towards tabletop exercises this year, so that way we can really help people understand the importance of conducting threat assessments and other types of drills that will take place in our buildings.
Thank you for walking through that and for, I mean, it's the most important thing, right? So just thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, recommended action, 11.1, may I have a motion to authorize the lease agreement with U.S. Bank Equipment Finance?
So moved.
Second. And welcome, Mr. Dorn.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Ms. Marshall. This is just a small lease agreement so that we'll have copiers in place at the new middle school, so I recommend that we move forward on this project.
Okay. Any deep questions? Thank you, hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, may I have a motion for the approval of the amended employee wellness plan for school year 2022 and 2023?
So moved.
Second. And Ms. Marshall?
Thank you again. So given participation in our remaining budget, there's room for an additional spring wellness challenge, so we're adding that to our wellness plan for the spring with a dietitian in your kitchen. So expect some emails in the future about that.
Any questions here?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no questions.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.3, may I have a motion to approve capital improvements bid package 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 at eight school buildings?
So moved.
Second. And welcome, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Mrs. Marshall. The HVAC Improvement Project included in this resolution aligns with the recommendations of our in-house HVAC team as led by Bob Lotterio, in conjunction with Osborne Engineering and the entire triad architectural team under contract with the district. The scope of work includes replacement of two rooftop units at Charrington Elementary and North High School, replacement of four rooftop units at Walnut Springs Middle School, replacement of the exhaust fan serving the faculty restrooms at Blunden Middle School, refurbishing of one air handling unit at Genoa Middle School, replacement of the main office and gym rooftop units at Wilder Elementary, and replacement of the office rooftop units at McKay Elementary, I'm sorry, McVeigh, there you go, first time the microphone, and Point View Elementary. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code on March 17 and publicly read on April 4. We received four bids. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Ohio Heating and Air Conditioning, Incorporated in the amount of $2,289,000. That was little over 1% over the architect's published estimate for the project. The HVAC work is scheduled as part of our 2023 Summer Capital Improvements Program and is being funded out of the Permanent Improvement Fund, or O3 as it's known. Ohio Heating and Air Conditioning, Incorporated is a well-established central Ohio HVAC company with references and experiences Ohio State, and more importantly, firsthand experience working with Osborne Engineering, our engineers on the project. It is thus that I'm recommending that the board accept the bid for the HVAC improvements from Ohio Heating and Air Conditioning as presented. Any questions?
Hearing none.
Okay, did you want me to?
Sure.
President? So since I'm at the mic, even though they've left, I'd be remiss, as the Director of Facilities, not to recognize two of the A-plus recipients tonight very quickly, and the president graciously gave me that honor to do as such. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Facilities Director, Mr. Jeff LaRose. For his 22 years of leadership, vision, and the resulting legacy of creative, innovative, and energy-efficient school facilities, he has helped to craft at Westerville City Schools. I am humbled and excited to follow in his footsteps and value the counsel and advice he has afforded me during this he has afforded me during this transition. Thanks, Jeff, and congratulations for all you have accomplished. And then to Mr. David Payne at Minerva France Elementary, head custodian. His leadership, his work ethic, just what he brings every day, as we heard today, is just exemplary. So on behalf of myself and his manager, Bob Parsons, I also wanted to thank and recognize him. So thank you for that.
Thank you for the kind words.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any public comments this evening, which takes us to board comments. Would anyone like to make a comment?
Just briefly, I've spoken a whole lot already this evening, but just congratulations once again to all of our A-plus award winners. Congratulations also to the retirements that were on the agenda this evening, and hope their next chapter, as I said, for Rhonda, hope your next chapter is a wonderful one, but thank you for your contributions and dedications to the families and the students of the Westerville City School District.
Well, I'd say ditto to that, and also congrats to Chase, that was pretty amazing stats for swimming. I was really inspired by him. And I do have a few, just two legislative updates. I wish they would go home, but they are home right now, so if they could stay there. House Bill 1 had fourth and fifth hearing in the House Ways and Means Committee since we last met. Overall, more than 45 entities have testified as an opponent of the legislation, a lot more opponents than proponents. As you may remember, House Bill 1 would change the income rate to a flat rate of 2.75%. The bill would also eliminate the 10% rollback on residential and agricultural property taxes, which every residential and agricultural taxpayer property taxes will increase by 10%. In order to offset this amount, the bill proposes to reduce the assessment percentage on residential, agricultural, business, and commercial property from 35% to 31.5. And as a result of Ohio tax law, the elimination of the 10% rollback and reduction of the assessment percentage from 35% to 31.5 results in a statewide impact of 929 million to 1.221 billion annual tax increase for residential and agricultural property taxpayers, 157 million annual tax decrease for business and commercial property taxpayers, and 538 million annual decrease in local tax revenues for schools and local governments. So residential and agricultural property taxes go up and local tax revenues for schools continue to decline. If you're worried about the legislation, please call your legislators and express how this could impact you, your family, and our school district. In House Bill 12, we've talked about a number of times, and since we've last met, House built, House Primary and Secondary Committee held a fourth hearing where 25 entities testified in opposition to the bill. And to remind you, the bill would transfer the majority of the powers and duties of the State Board of Education and the Superintendent of Public Instruction to the newly formed and established Department of Educational Workforce, where the head of it would be appointed by the governor. This bill would take the oversight of requirements for curriculum out of boards' hands, of which all these people were elected by citizens of Ohio to undertake these duties and place it in the hands of the governors. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Again, I just want to echo the congratulations and the thank yous, and also just remind every, well, and congratulations to those who are moving jobs and who are joining us. So glad to have you here, so thanks for being here tonight. And just want to acknowledge that this is a time of year when we're moving into, like, some kids will be doing testing and things might feel a little, you know, out of sorts for them. I have a, there's a little bit of sickness going around. I have a sick child at home myself, so please, you know, just everyone, give those young people some grace. I know it's a really important and can feel like a high-pressure time of year for them, but in any case, as best we can. I know we have such a wonderful staff that supports our kids every day, and it's an exciting but can be a stressful time for them and for the staff, too, so I just want to acknowledge that and thank you all for helping them through, and thank you for getting each other through and yourselves through. Thanks.
Education is a people business. It's all about people. It's helping people grow. It's having people help other people. It is indeed one of the greatest of people businesses. And tonight, I think all who participated in this meeting and those who may watch it later saw some of our greatest and heard stories of changes for others who are equally great. We have remarkable people in this school district, our staff in every area, our students, our families, our community as a whole. All of the people together is what makes this a truly remarkable place to be, full of striving, full of success, full of challenge, and indeed, full of tomorrow's light. And that, I think, is what we saw here tonight. So I want to thank everyone who received an award, everyone who has stepped up to take on additional responsibility, everyone who every day comes into the Westerville City Schools with the goal of making it the best it can be for all of the people that attend, live, work, love this place. That's all I got to say?
Okay, thank you. I just want to echo everyone's comments tonight. This was a big night, lots of big changes, people coming, people going, promotions, congratulations. It was really wonderful to be part of it, so thank you all for joining us and staying the whole time. So dates, times, and locations, 14.1, the board will meet in a special session on Monday, April 17th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Westerville North High School. That will be our Gem Awards. It's another night where we're able to honor amazing people in our district, teachers, volunteers, you name it. And then again, a regular session on Monday, April 24th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We're adjourned.